Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join me in our pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me, please? Our Father, who art in heaven, we just want to thank you for the creation that you've created for us. We thank you for our community. We thank you for the different groups in this community that work and serve others, that this can be a great community. We just want to thank you for all the service people that spend time and effort to keep us safe and sound. We just thank you for this council and the work that they do, and we just ask that you continue to guide and direct and bless them. We just want to thank you for being our Lord and Savior, Father. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting. I have a proclamation to read, first of all. Ladies, you want to all come up here and be a part of this? Sure, come on right up here. I enjoy being surrounded by a bunch, a number of young ladies here. Okay, good. I'll stand next to the tall one here. But I will read this proclamation. Mike, I don't know if we got good photos there or not, but whereas September 17th, 2015, marks the 200th and 28th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document in the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23 as Constitutional Week, now therefore I, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the Guthrie, or City of Guthrie, Oklahoma, do hereby declare September 17th through September 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week in Guthrie, Oklahoma, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas, ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787. And witness, therefore, I hereto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Guthrie, Oklahoma, on this 15th day of September in the year of our Lord 2015, and of the independence of the United States of America, the 239th year, and of the statehood of Oklahoma, the 180th year. That's our proclamation. Thank you. Thank you very much, Sarah. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, ladies. And I will sign this and get this to you in one second. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comment, community announcements, recognitions? We have a request here from Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen? Mr. Allen, do you want to speak when we discuss that on the agenda item? Okay. So I'll proceed then to item number three, which is our consent agenda. We have two items. Item A, which is the approval of the minutes of September 1, and item B, which is approval, consider approval of an engagement letter with Crawford and Associates for accounting and consulting for fiscal year 2016.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion of these two consent items? Okay, submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. It's unanimously approved by all members in attendance. Item number four, discussion and possible action on resolution number 2015-19, which is the renewal of the lease purchase agreements with the F&amp;M Bank for a period of one year beginning October 1st, 2015, and ending September 30th, 2016. Is there any discussion there? I will entertain a motion and a...
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Lots of discussion there. Submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
Again, a unanimous approval by all members present to approve that resolution and renew the lease for one year. We are adjourned from the Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting, and I call to order now our city council meeting. We have a number of items on the consent agenda.
Moved to approval.
I got one item I want to discuss on that. Council, the chemical feed system, I believe is going to be a GPWA matter. I'd like to have that removed and bring it back for the Public Works Authority at a future date.
Okay, and that would be item number C. Is that correct?
Yes.
Item number C is requested by the city manager to be moved to a discussion off of the consent agenda and on a further agenda to be further discussed.
I amend my motion to remove item C for that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So the motion is for consent agenda items A through B and D through H.
Yes.
Is that the motion? And is that the second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
Unanimous approval of the consent agenda with the amendment as made. Item number three, discussion and possible action on resolution 2015-19, which is a renewal of a lease for F&amp;M Bank for a period of one year. I will entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes? Unanimous approval of all councilor present. Item number four.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
When we have something like that, can we put that in the consent agenda since we voted it on the previous meeting?
Yep. Let me take a look at it.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that there's nothing, I want to make sure there's nothing in the agreements to state that has to be voted on separately, so.
Okay. All right, we'll take a look at that. Good suggestion. Item number four, which is the discussion and possible action of ordinance 3274, Rules and Regulations for Waterfowl Hunting at Liberty Lake. Mr. Allen, would you like to make your public comment now? Please come to the podium, submit your, identify yourself.
My name is Wesley Allen. My wife and I live at 8705 Lakewood Avenue, which is about 200 yards from the southeast portion of Liberty Lake. And we wanted to state our objections to hunting at the lake. Since we are so close to the lake, we, all these years, we've known exactly when duck season starts because we get woken up before daylight, and it's not just a few shots, it's more like 100 to 200 shots. And we can't even sit on our patio and have a cup of coffee in the morning without the guns going off. Some of you might know my wife, she taught for over 20 years at the high school, science teacher. And we just want, and I speak for my neighbor also, Jerry Richardson, his house has been hit with birdshot before. I don't know that mine has, but it might have been. And we just do not like, the area's growing up, there's more houses out there all the time, there's more people, and the time for hunting ducks is over, I think, at this lake. It's a quality of life issue for us. I mean, the hunters don't care, you know, about our quality of life, but they come and they leave, and we're there all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Okay, discussion concerning this ordinance, which allows for waterfall hunting at Liberty Lake, has come before the council in your path.
Actually, this would repeal the ordinance that allows for it, so.
This is to reallow for it?
No.
This would be...
No, what you guys have is last year, at this, I think it was last August 2014, you guys had a vote that did not set the dates for waterfowl hunting in Guthrie for 2014. The ordinance allowing for waterfowl hunting was never addressed. So the ordinance for waterfowl hunting is still on the books and is still part of our code of ordinances. In order for waterfowl hunting to be eliminated, you have to repeal the ordinance, which is still in effect. So the ordinance that's brought to you guys here tonight, if approved, would repeal the ordinance allowing for waterfowl hunting.
Are there any other staff comments? No? Okay. Sir? Well, the rules, sir, are to sign in and identify yourself before the meeting started. Excuse me, before the meeting starts, and identify the topic that you want to speak at. I will, if you would like to come and sign this right here, I will make an exception for one of you to speak. Just put your name right there.
Right here?
Please identify yourself and, and the topic, you obviously are talking about the duck hunting on Liberty Lake.
My name is Paul Fincher. I represent Ducks Unlimited, about 5,500 members in the state of Oklahoma. I live in Logan County. I have some businesses here and some buildings. Liberty Lake, I've hunted Liberty Lake for quite a few years. It's a great sport. It's a family tradition. Mr. Hayden over there, he brings his grandsons and people, and Carl and the other people that were here, and I'm sorry that we didn't see the sign-in sheet, and I appreciate that you let us come up here and do this. I did a lot of research on Liberty Lake and asked a lot of questions, and just recently I went to a waterfowl drawing that was held over the internet and at Lake McMurtry, and I learned a lot there, believe it or not. There's some things that we could adapt to the Liberty Lake blinds that would increase the revenue for Guthrie and what you need. Also, the objection to shooting the people that live near there, you know, we have at the Guthrie Country Club, they have blinds there and people live real close to there, and they get used to that. You could curtail the hunting at Liberty Lake from Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and no hunting Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and that would give the fishermen, the campers, and the trail hikers, and the horseback trails, people that do that, the time to do that. And we would only take a small few months anyway from the end of October until the end of February. It isn't like we're going to be there forever. And if you only did Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and the holidays, hunting, and you averaged $700 a blind, and you have 13 blinds, that's pretty good revenue. Plus, look at all the business that comes in town. We could have packed this place here with 80 or 90 people tonight, but I wasn't sure about what was happening on the agenda. And anyway, I hope you reconsider letting us do this, and I'd appreciate it if you maybe let some of the other people like Mr. Hayden and Carl Tipton talk a minute, if you would.
I think you've established the case unless anybody has a different position to take. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for that information. So continuing with item number four, discussion and possible action of ordinance, so the clarification is, this ordinance is to remove the previous ordinance which allowed the potential of duck hunting on Liberty Lake. So a yes removes and a no keeps it.
Actually, I think the motion should be to repeal ordinance 3244.
Okay. So moved.
That'd be fine.
And that, doesn't that take care of what, if you don't want duck hunting?
You can do it either way.
Yeah. The original ordinance is 3244, and the...
Okay, I'm gonna take that, well, maybe my packet doesn't have the new ordinance in it.
It should have it in there.
So is this open for discussion?
Got a motion.
3274 is the ordinance that we have before him.
And that's the one that repeals?
Repeals ordinance number 3244.
If you want to do away with duck hunting, you would move to approve ordinance 3274, and a yes vote on that ordinance would repeal duck hunting.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Yeah, so, again, the season is October through February, right? What's the exact date on the...
Is it November 1st, or is it the end of October, to the end of February?
October 30th, it starts in the, ends February, so November 28th.
Okay, it's the end of February, that's... And that, based upon the ordinance, so it's set by the park board?
Yes. And so that's in an area that we want to drive sportsman-type activity in the first place, Liberty Lake. Horseback riding, sportsman-type, fishing. It is, the city, as you all know, does have a plan to create a destination point on Liberty Lake for a number of activities. Camping, horseback riding, fishing, the proposal, or what has been on the books, the potential for duck hunting, and other outside activities. But clearly, that was, is a focus and is in our strategic plan to create that environment at Lake Liberty. Right, and my personal opinion would be that in those cold winter months, your likelihood of camping, if we just talk about a revenue standpoint for a minute, okay? If we're looking at, how much are the blinds? Did I hear 700?
700.
700 times 13.
So I'd like to look at last October through February's camping revenue and permit revenue at that point. That's what I thought I saw.
400.
Yeah, they're 400. Somebody gets the other 300.
Well, the 700, 700 was what we went to the park board with last year, and it shouldn't be...
That's what you proposed.
The other thing that I told you on the dates, those are set by the federal government, the dates that I gave you for Zone 1, which Liberty Lake is in.
Okay. So you're setting the price of 700?
Yeah, that's what we had approved through the park board.
That's what they proposed.
And now the parks board already approved this, is my understanding, is that correct?
They do.
They recommended approval.
And they approved that.
No, they recommended... They recommended approval, which I understand. Any other discussion here? There is camping that's impacted, there's clearly fishing that's potentially impacted. We have one gentleman that has identified a personal residence that's impacted and a neighbor.
How many residents are there out there?
There's quite a few, I couldn't tell you. I'd like to say so.
I don't think there's that many.
Yes, there is, there's more than you guys. Oh, yeah, there is.
There's a lot.
There's a new housing development on the south end of the lake. It's huge.
Yeah. So do we have to have the duck hunting on the south end of the lake?
Actually, we all live on the south end of the lake, and we got the problem.
Okay, all right.
The other, the other thing, Paul was mentioning 13 blinds, we used to use 22.
Okay, there is a potential revenue source, without question. What we, I guess we don't have is what the potential loss is of fishermen not using that area, campers not using that area, horseback riding, those kinds.
What's the housing value?
I think I'm going to cut it off, I've given you pretty leniency so far, but I think I'm just going to cut it off.
I wonder about housing value, because would I want to buy a house in that area knowing that four months a year it's going to be that loud?
I bought my house for Liberty Lake, so I bought it here.
There's a lot of hunters, Don.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't know if I would want to do that unless I was specifically a hunter, but...
Well, I have concern about the perception, and the perception of guns, of gunfire, for those people that aren't familiar with birdshot, don't realize how far it can or cannot go. It obviously cannot go very far. Not very at all. But people, I'm telling you that there's a perception that when they hear gunfire, they don't know that it's shot, or whether it's a, it's a bullet. And so that's a challenge. I think if we're, we've been trying to develop Liberty Lake to be hospitable, I guess, for multiple types of outdoors activity, and I see, my opinion is that there's a potential perception that would minimize that. And it's for a fairly, it's not just for a couple of weeks, we're talking for... Well, that's where I was going to go with it, is there compromise in the time? Just because the state, federal government says the season is from here to here, is there any compromise in the timeframe when we, you know, in the deep winter months, you know, for waterfowl hunting out there? Maybe it's December, January? Maybe it's not. But there's compromise, we got to look at all different avenues, as far as my opinion goes. Yeah, we don't want to hurt a gentleman's house, but I know personally that birdshot doesn't go that far, okay? Now, if your house is right there on the lake, that's a different thing. I didn't know any houses had lakefront on Liberty Lake. But noise can be a factor, I'll give you that. Fishermen can be a factor, I'll give you that. It'll be hard to...
Horseback riding.
Horseback riding, yeah, but in the dead of winter, they're not going to go horseback riding.
It's not always possible.
Duck hunting is typically a morning sport, very early. It's not an afternoon. If you're going to ride a horse, you're going to ride it in the afternoon when the sun's out on a cold winter day. There can be, I guess where I'm, where I'm trying to get with this deal, is there can be potentially some kind of compromise if it could come up to, if we could come up to some kind of compromise. Maybe it doesn't need to be decided tonight. Maybe if we look at alternatives, if we look at back past revenue, this is something that's been done at this lake forever, is my understanding, for a long time. This isn't something that's new. We abolished it last year, we didn't, the council did at that point.
It's been coming, though, for a couple of years, because the vision of the council has been to do this issue of making it a go-to place.
I understand that, and, but you take a go-to place, it's kind of like square footage. You know, you take a go-to place that's not generating revenue in a certain timeframe, and you generate revenue, because we need it. That's what this is all about. It's about, it's also about quality of life for the gentleman over there, but it's also about the quality of life for these guys and their sons and their grandkids and granddaughters who do go duck hunting. I would agree with that, Brian, to the extent that if there, if this was the only place to go hunting, duck hunting, in the area, and I think that's not true, I think there are a number of other duck hunting venues in the area that where they, where they can go. So it's not like, it's not, it's not being exclusive, you know, I mean, you're not saying you can't go duck hunting with your son or your daughter. Right, no, I understand that. I understand that, Mayor. But where in Guthrie else are they going to go duck hunting? Well, I'm not saying in Guthrie, but in the area, around Guthrie. My responsibility is fiscal to the people of Guthrie. Okay. Okay, and if there's a revenue generation source that's not hurting others at that point in certain timeframes, then it needs to be explored, and it needs to be looked at. That's all. Okay, all right. Any other? Is there any other discussion? No other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote, folks, submit your vote. So, wait a minute, before you, before you submit your vote, again, if we are voting for this ordinance, we are saying no duck hunting. That's what you're saying. Okay, if you vote against this ordinance, you are saying that the previous ordinance stays in effect, okay? So a yes is no duck hunting, a no is... But before we do this, is there not a way we can have a compromise and push this off of this agenda? And let's look at a different timeframe and different hours. Well, we have a, we have a motion and a second before the, before the council. If the motion or if the second, John, are you willing to withdraw your second? To have further discussion and look at it?
I'm not withdrawing my motion, so you can vote on this and then talk about it again if you want, but you...
But he just, the attorney just said you can withdraw.
I didn't.
I know, but you can withdraw a second.
He doesn't have to.
I'm good with the second.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second.
You can bring this back up to talk about it another time.
On the table, and again, a yes, a yes means that there is no duck hunting, and a no means that there is duck hunting. Okay? Please submit your vote.
All votes are in.
Read the votes. Okay, it's a four to two in favor of passing the new ordinance which does not, would not allow duck hunting on Liberty Lake. Four to two vote by the council that goes into effect. City manager report.
A report.
That was the quickest report I think we've ever had.
I'm good at that.
Okay, all right. Councilman Taylor, Jeff Taylor?
Cowboys won, okay, I got to admit, the Sooners won, it was a heck of a comeback, so I will admit that.
Bears lost, though.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. Well, my other Cowboys won as well. I like, they gave up on them, so. Guthrie Sports is up and running now, so, and like I said, school's back in, so you guys need to pay attention to that. Thank you, city staff, I know you guys have to work in this nasty weather we've got going again. We're back to the, the cool air, back into the heat, so I know they're doing some street repair work, so I appreciate that, too, so thank you, guys.
All right. Councilman Thomas?
I don't have anything to add to that, anything, covered everything. Blue Jays looked pretty good last week, and Dallas Cowboys fell into one, so.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Councilman Bothroyd?
I've got nothing.
Okay. Councilman Johnwood?
I don't have anything.
And?
And I really have nothing to say tonight. Everything is good for Guthrie.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Whoa, 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 I'm sorry.
We missed it.
I am sorry.
You got a couple...
We do, we do have a couple of other things. We're back in, back in session, I'm sorry.
We never adjourned.
Yeah. Item number seven, which is consider approval to convene to executive session for the purposes of discussing two employment situations, city attorney and alternate judge, items A and B. I'll consider a motion in a second.
I would just, I would just say we don't need to go into executive session, I'm happy with it, and make a motion to...
Yeah, if we do that, let's don't.
Do we need to go into executive session?
I think we do, I got a motion. Okay, your motion to go into executive session, is there a second? Second. Second? All those in favor, please vote. Are we in? We have... We have, the motion to go to executive session is approved by a vote of five to one.